So our end fund balance, given the adopted budget, increased over the years slightly. And that's where we ended for the adopted budget. So now, we change that adopted budget to reflect what the state has done. And the state has adopted the local control funding formula. And so, we have now put that into, we are putting that into the budget. So we're moving from the revenue limit, which is in the past now. We won't be doing the revenue limit anymore unless they go back to it, which I seriously doubt that it will ever look like it looked before. So, we are on to the local control formula funding for the future, for the current and for the future. Additionally, we are going to be recognizing $1.2 million for one-time Common Core funding. Now, that's actually part of last year's budget. Well, it's not part of the budget, but it's from Prop 98 for last year, because Prop 98 came in higher than expected. And so, the way the governor decided to give the money to the school districts was to fund Common Core, which is really wonderful for us. We will need these funds, and I'll show you a little bit later how we're already using those funds. And then, also, because a new census data came out, and we're trying to keep up with the federal government and how they are awarding us for our federal grants. But Title I, we have been reduced in funding by Title I, Title I once again, by $90,000, in addition to what we thought earlier. But that's realigning it with the census data. And so consequently, because we've got these programs in place, the general fund will have to support Title I for the reduced amount. So that's a reduction in unrestricted revenues for us. But we also have this, how expenditures have changed in the revised budget. We had $650,000 budgeted for technology expenses to support Common Core. Well, now, those expenditures can be transferred to follow the restricted Common Core funds that have come in. So those expenditures will be moving out of the unrestricted expenditures and going into restricted and being paid for by the Common Core. So that, that's really good for us. Yeah. That's excellent. And also, because we know where the budget is now, we have, we're removing from our fund balance designations the designation as State Adoption Reserve. So, this part is, time to put your thinking caps on. This is an education now. And the following slides will be a template for you to be able to refer to in the future if you are trying to understand how we're getting our new funding. Because this is completely different, again, from the revenue limit. And I wanted to give you something that you could go from page to page and try to follow it and see how we're getting our funding from year to year in the future. So, this is the education on the...
You have to hear it four times before you understand.
Local control funding formula. But you know what? You have, oops. You have eight years to learn it.
How great.
And then, it should be smooth sailing. So, and this is something that you've, we've gone over before too. So where, it used to be seven years, now it's eight years. And what we're fun, we're going to be funding over this eight years, or what the state's going to be funding, is what they're calling, what we're calling our gap. Okay? So, our gap in funding is equal to the difference between what our local control funding formula target is for 2021, and the amount that we got last year under the revenue limit with COLA added to it, the 1.565 percent COLA, plus the categorical programs that are going to be disappearing that have, that are a part of the LCFF. So, in other words, last year's monies that would be applicable to the LCFF, compared to our target, you take one, subtract out the other, and that's what we're, we're short funded. And that's the amount that is supposed to be funded over the next eight years.
That was the deferred...
I'm sorry?
That was the deferred payments?
No, that has nothing to do with the deferred, the deferrals. That's a completely different thing. We still are going to have deferrals. Deferrals are being reduced, however. So because Prop 98 was bigger last year, they're putting approximately $2 billion more towards the interior deferrals. So, that wall of debt is being reduced. And there is this intent to continue to reduce that wall of debt.
Yeah, hopefully.
So, and those were funds that we still got. We just kind of got them a little later than we were supposed to get them. The paycheck came late. So for year 13, 14, the year that we're now in and the year that we're revising, we are going to be funded 11.78 percent of the gap. And I, as we move along, you'll see these things coming up over and over again in the little lessons, okay? So, we will receive that, that portion of the gap this year. In the following years, the, what will be funded of the gap is not known at this time, and it will be determined on a year-to-year basis, what the state can afford. Now, that target is going to increase on a yearly basis by the COLA. That is the intent at this time. And of course, they can increase it. They just don't, they don't necessarily have to fund it, right? Yeah, the target is going to increase, but the funding is, we'll see how that increases. And that deficit factor is completely gone now. We're not, they're not going to fund the deficit factor. This is instead of the deficit. The target is instead of the deficit factor. Okay, so now, how do we do this? How do we, how do we actually do this local control funding formula? How do we figure out what our target is? How is the funding going to happen? Well, there's the base grant. And the base grant is by grade span now. Where we used to get ADA per kid, and it was just a flat amount. Didn't matter if they were in kindergarten or eighth grade. Now it does. It's going to be K3, 4, 6, 7, 8 for us. And we do have the COLA put onto it. And the class size reduction that we've been getting, we've been getting $1,171 per enrollment in class size reduction. If we had no penalties at all, that's going to be replaced by $723 per student. So, it is a reduction. It's going to be based, it's based on class sizes of 24 to 1 maximum. And so, this base grant, not only replaces, replaces the revenue limit, but many categorical programs and class size reduction. So then, after we get, and this base grant amount, every district will get. It doesn't matter if you're basic aid. It doesn't matter if you're us or anybody else in the state. This base amount, we're all going to go with that same number.
So you mean the places that already get a bazillion dollars through their property taxes are still going to get that amount?
Well, that's the guaranteed amount. You know, they'll, they'll get more than...
I mean, but they get that in addition to their...
They won't get that in addition to their property taxes.
Oh, okay, so, so they're guaranteed at least that much. Okay, good. I was just thinking like, I don't really feel like sharing with Woodside.
Right. Yeah, exactly. We'll see what happens in the years to come. So, once we get our base grant amount, then come on, come to the add-on grants. The add-on grants, there's two basic ones. There's supplemental grant and concentration grant. And so, this is based on what I'm going to call enrollment eligibility percent. And what that is made up of is the unduplicated count, our district's unduplicated count, or any district's unduplicated count, of their free and reduced students, as well as their English learners and their foster youth. So what we mean is, an unduplicated count is if a free and reduced student is also an English learner, we don't get to count them twice. We only count them once. So, district-wide, we'll have a certain percentage of that. Actually, not really district-wide, but in those grade spans, there'll be a certain percentage of our students that will be free and reduced and the unduplicated count. So, in order to determine...
Susan, but they're also counted first up above?
I'm sorry?
Are they first counted up above?
Well, every student is counted up above.
Just want to make sure that we didn't take them out.
So, the, these add-on grants are for these eligible, the enrolled eligible students that are disadvantaged here. So with the supplemental grant, which is going to be our first add-on, we're going to take this, and I will show you in other pages, okay? The numbers. We're going to take the base grant amount here, and we're going to say 20 percent of that base grant amount, we'll take the base grant times 20 percent, times our percent, our percent of enrollment eligibility students, okay? That will be, and we'll look at the numbers. That will be the add-on for the supplemental grant. For the concentration grant, we're going to take that base grant again. We're going to multiply it by 50 percent. And then, we're going to apply the percentage of our enrollment eligibility students that are above 55 percent. So in other words, if you had 60 percent, then only five, that would be a 5 percent number then, here. So you have to subtract out that 55 percent from whatever your, your EE percent is, okay? We're going to go over that more. You don't have to understand it quite yet. So, then there's a couple other additional add-ons. There's the TIG, the Targeted Instruction Improvement Grant, and the home-to-school transportation. And that was a political thing. They're just adding that on. We will continue to get that. There won't be COLA added to that from year to year. It's just basically so that districts don't lose these funds. The TIG funds will be unrestricted, and the home-to-school transportation funds need to be used for our home-to-school transportation. But that's not a problem, because we have to provide transportation for our special ed students, and we can use it for that.
Are we required to do TIG? I know that we, that's when the students go to another classroom.
That's the same, different TIG.
It's a homonym.
What is this one?
You don't have to think of it as, it's just money now.
All right.
Okay? And it's unrestricted.
Okay.
Okay, so now we get to some numbers, okay? So, the adjusted base grant, so it's now adjusted for it with the COLA in it and the class size reduction in it. These are the dollar amounts that we, in every district, will get as a minimum for our students, for every ADA that we have.
Why, why does 7, 8 kids get less?
I'm sorry, what?
How come this 7, 8 kid has a lesser amount?
Okay, so, good, good question. The reason why the K6, and this, and everything here should really probably be TK6, okay? But I'll just, so, every time I say K6, it's really TK6, okay? The reason why TK6, TK3, I'm sorry, TK3, is higher than these two is because it's got that class size reduction adjustment in it.
Oh, okay.
That additional $723. And so then, you know, this 4, 6 is lower, but then 7, 8 goes a little bit higher than the 4, 6. So that's why it's more. So this is the amount that everybody's going to get. And then we get to the supplemental grant, which every, like, again, every district is going to have a different percentage of these EE students, okay? And so, if you take this, and what I'll do in this example here, in these examples, is these all follow the same thing. So we'll just go with the K3, because the formula is the same for all the groups. So if you take the $7,675 of the base grant, and you multiply it by 20 percent, you end up with $1,535 per EE student, EE percentage of students, okay? So what's going to happen is then, after you get this amount, we're going to multiply it, and you'll see that in the next slide, by the EE percent. It'll, it's on the next slide. Then we get down to the concentration grant. Again, the concentration grant is now going to take 50 percent of this amount. 50 percent is $3,838. Then, it's going to be multiplied by the EE percent that is above 50 percent. That means it can only be 45 percent is the maximum amount, right? Because from 50 percent to 100 percent...
45.
So, see this here? This is if 100 percent of our students were eligible for these additional grants. So in other words, if we had 100 percent, and I know this seems like, well, we're not there. No district is going to be there. But it is actually important for you to be able to take this template and be able to figure things out yourself if you wanted to in the future. So, this is the most possible that any district could get if they had 100 percent unduplicated count. So, which means that if you can only have it for students at the, the percentage over 55 percent, that means you can only get a maximum of 45 percent of that. That's why I've crossed it out. This is what you're going to multiply by, but the biggest multiplier you could have is 45 percent. So if you have that 45 percent, you would get 45 percent of that amount, which would be $1,727 per student. So if we add these three together, 1, 2, and 3, we would end up with the amount of funding you would get per K3 student, TK3. So at this point, all of this is based on enrollment, and then we get paid based on attendance. So that's why I say we move from enrollment to attendance. We determine the dollar amount we're going to get by enrollment. And then we get applied, gets applied to us by attendance. Okay, so this is the maximum. And this target is to be fully funded. You're going to hear me say this over and over again in 2020, 21. So the next slide, we're going to go to Jefferson now. So here we are, and here is our unduplicated eligibility enrollment is 77.4 percent, okay? So now we have the numbers. This is approximate, based on last year. But it's going to be based on our Cbeds material for this year, which we are not going to have for quite some time. But we're not going to vary that much from last year. So this is target calculation here. Again, these are the exact numbers that you saw on the previous page for our base grant amount. That's not going to change this year. Then what we're going to do is, we're going to take this amount, we're multiplying it by the 20 percent. And then we take that 20, the amount that we get from that, and we multiply it by 0.774. And so, in which case, for our supplemental grant, we get $1,188 per TK through 3 student. We go down to our concentration grant. Again, we take this amount here, we multiply it by 50 percent. Then we multiply it by our EE that's above 55 percent. So 77.4 percent minus that 55 percent, and we end up with 22.4 percent. So, take this, multiply it by 50 percent, multiply it by 22.4 percent, and we end up with 860 per TK student, TK ADA. So, we add each of these three together, 1, 2, 3. Our district ends up with $9,723 as a target for 2020, 21, when we multiply that out by our ADA for the, this grade span. And then, of course, these are the other two grade spans. Next, what does it actually come to? What do the dollars come to for this district? So our base grant times our current ADA would be $44.5 million. Our add-on grants, supplemental grant, concentration grant, are almost $7 million and almost $5 million. So nearly $12 million more of restricted money, okay? Highly restricted later on. We'll talk a little bit about that. And then we get our TIG money, and we get our transportation money. And every year, this is going to stay the same. These will change, because we're going to have COLA added to those. But, and also because our unduplicated count will vary from year to year. But these will change, these will stay the same each year. So we add all this up, this is our target amount, $57 million for 2020, 21, if it's all funded by them.
I just had a horrid thought that I have to ask. Because we actually get paid on the ADA. Is that going to matter then? Are we going to have to be tracking if, if the kid who's absent is a kid who is one of our eligibility kids? Are we going to take a bigger hit on that ADA?
No.
Are we going to have to track that? God help us.
Because what happens is our formula, let me go back. Our formula is based on enrollment, and then it's, we're not going to get this, not attendance. We wouldn't have to multiply it by the 0.774 if it were per student, because that student would get 100 percent. And a student that didn't, wasn't one of these counts, wouldn't get any of this, right?
Right, okay.
So the determination is based on enrollment district-wide, and the payment is determined on attendance.
I just had, I just had this horrible thought. And I can see the government doing that to us.
So the reminder will be, if you're looking at this, is this part right here. That will be a reminder for the future when you're trying to figure it out. Should you try to figure it out.
Well, obviously, any absence will then ding us by that, that amount that's a per student, that 9, 7, whatever it was.
Okay, so that, here's our target once again. So now we're going to go on to what is this year's funding? So now we know what our target is for 2020, 21, but what are we going to get this year? Okay, so here's our target, okay? And then our transitional base funding, our hold harmless, which what I said was last year's revenue limit, plus COLA, plus class size reduction. I'm repeating myself, because I'm trying to just kind of help you to remember this. So our amount is $36 million. So if you take the 56 million or 57 million, and you subtract out the 36 million, we end up with our funding gap that's going to be funded over the next eight years. Except that, that's going to change, because we're going to get the COLA.
Am I hearing that that $20,000 is going to be stretched over eight years?
Yes, this, this amount, this, the funding gap, yeah. So the target won't be funded for eight years supposedly. And the gap is what's going to be funded, because we're already getting this from last year, okay? So that's the minimum we're going to get. And they're saying this is our gap, and so it's going to be funded over an eight-year period. So, we take our, our beginning transition amount, which is the amount that we got last year, our hold harmless amount, we put it here. And remember, I said we're going to get 11.78 percent of the gap? Okay, so 11.78 percent of this amount is $2,400,000. And don't get too excited, because remember, we already put into the budget the deficit reduction dollar amount. Kind of pretty much evens itself out. We're a little bit ahead, but it pretty much evens itself out. So we did a good job with that. So, but I want, what I want to remind you here is that the concentration grants...
We heard concentration camp.
Grants. It sounded like camp. No. Supplemental and concentration grants make up 21.1 percent of this total funding. So, you can think of, in a way, it makes up 21.1 percent of any funding that we get. Although, we don't really have to, well, we'll go into that later, okay? So, our budget, we're changing our budget so that this will be the dollar amount that we recognize as receiving from the local control funding formula. So this is what it's going to look like now. We had an $82,000 deficit spending, and now we've got a $1.1 million increase. And I want to, I don't have any... That's pretty much, that's made up by, actually, additional, net additional revenues of $591,000, and a decrease in expenditures of $641,000 right here. And $658,000 of that was from the technology investment. So we, we moved that out from here and put it into the restricted to follow the Common Core funding. So as you can see, we're in a better position. Not huge better, but better. This year is huge better. In the other years, they're, they're good too. And then we come down to what our end fund balance is going to be. Plus, if you look down here in the designations, I've removed $1.3 million that was designated as the State Adoption Reserve. So it's, it's been moved out of here. Okay, so here is our fund balance, which has that same kind of curve that we had before. It's a little bit better.
So this is our balance?
That's our, that's our fund balance. No negotiations have been completed, and our, our benefits cap is still the same, okay? So that is, again, without changing anything there, okay? So, with the comply, the supplemental and concentration grants, not camps, there are those huge compliance issues that we'll be faced with. And mostly, at this point, we don't really know just yet exactly what they're going to be. But when we're full, when it's fully implemented in 2020, 21, those dollars are all supposed to follow the students that generate them. Until then, we're supposed to have maintenance of effort for the EIA program. And we will get more guidance as time goes on, which comes down to right here. The State Board of Equal, State Board of Education has a timeline. That timeline is January 1, this coming January 1. They'll have the standards and criteria for us. What that is, is that, that's our accounting ability. So how we account for it. So when you get your first interim report, second interim reports, you know, and the, the budget and such, we do the standard and criteria as part of it. At that time, they'll be telling us for these grants and stuff, what are our resource codes that we're going to use? How do we need to account for them? Okay, so they're going to tell us what those numbers are, so we know where to put the expenditures, right? At the end of January, they're going to tell us how to spend the money. So, you know, and hopefully, we've done a good job of spending it decently in the time being. But we will spend it like we've spent the EIA, because right now, we're holding, we're still doing the EIA program, and we need to do it at least like we did it last year at this time. So that's what we're following.
Just to clarify, EIA, does economic impact, A or...
Yeah. The end of March, they'll have what we're calling the LCAP. So it's going to be the local accountability, the local control accountability plan template. So that we, in the future, will have a plan to how are we going to be spending these funds? What programs are we going to be implementing that are going to support the supplemental and concentration grant, that the supplemental and concentration grant will support? So what are those programs? And so, that template will be out this year. And then, October 1, 2015, they'll establish the rubric. How are they going to, how are they going to score us on what we're, what we've done?
But then they'll be able to tell exactly how well we've done our local control according to exactly the way they want us to do it.
Yeah, exactly. So is it really local control?
No.
So, so we're hoping to get at least some guidance, really, on January 31. This is just going to be an accounting thing. We're moving every expenditure we've got to different places. But this is where we're going to learn more about how to spend the funds.
Are they, are the legislators trying to figure that out? Or are they waiting for us to go through halfway through the school year?
I'm going to guess that it's going to be a work in process. As I said to you, you've got eight years to figure, to learn this. So do they. So for the revised budget, because I've got a couple more slides, but it's not the revised budget portion. Do we have some questions that I can help you with?
Wouldn't you like a big bottle of migraine pills for Christmas?
I mean, even though the way it's presented in the nutshell, how much money are we going to get more?
Are we going to have more?
Yeah.
About, well, we've got, between the reduction of expenditures...
How you get it? Just tell me the numbers.
And an increase in, okay, about 5... And an increase in, okay, uh, about five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars this year.
More than what we had last year.
More than what we budgeted this year.
Well, 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 budget.
Um, over last year, it's greater than that, because um, we recognized COLA already in our adopted budget, and we also recognized the um, deficit reduction in our, in our budget. And the deficit reduction was like about four point two eight five percent, and the COLA was about, was one point five six five percent. So you put those together, and we're getting close to a six percent increase over last year. That's what was in our adopted budget, and so now this pushes it up a little bit. So it's probably a little bit around six percent over last year. That is just off the top of my head right now, don't quote me on those numbers.
I don't have any questions, just a comment that I'm glad to at least see the projections and the years are all positive, as opposed to when I first came on the board.
Zero.
Zero, and then go into negative, and then maybe later somewhere down the, the line going up, so that looks uh-
I also want to say that, you know, this big amount of the, this restricted grant amount, this twelve million dollars, it's going to um, we're going to be looking at that and thinking, how, how do we appropriately spend those funds? How do we um, structure, and, and I'm not the person for this, this is where I'm not qualified in instruction, of course. But how do we educate our students where those funds will be able to support that? Figure out how to spend those funds appropriately.
Well, now I do have a question.
Come January, we'll have more guidance on that.
That maintenance of effort, that's my question, like, what is that?
That's what we're already doing.
I think it's just, it's basically spend at least as much as you spent last year on this program.
Oh, I see, maintenance of effort.
Which is what, which is what is planned in the budget. Okay, so, any other questions about the, the revised budget?
Nope.
Oh, we can-
So we have, just real quickly, you know, I asked Ms. Kessler to just, real quickly, just go over, what happens if we increase our district expenditures by, we'll just start off with ten percent. What happens if our expenditures go up by ten?
Right, so my next slides are just two slides, basically show, where would the district be if every, if, if our expenditures were increased by ten percent? Just, flat ten percent, not breaking it out anywhere. So, this is how we, what we'd look like, if we increased expenditures, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and the out years, by ten percent, we would have deficit spending of three point five million dollars this year, four million next. Almost four million the following year, I could tell what that number was, and three point two in the out year. That would translate in our fund balance to that. So I think the, the reason for this slide is, a lot of times if you sit there and think ten percent is nothing, what's ten percent? That's no big deal. But you see what happens with just ten, that's all I did, is increase expenditures by ten percent. And um, and, and that's the effect. And I just wanted to add that on at the end, so that just kind of makes people recognize that things, it's like the penny today, you double it every day for thirty days, and you end up with a lot more money than just a million dollars. It's hard to believe, but it happens.
I'd like to echo on that, on the fact that absolutely correct, is, is the fact that we, we should continue to be frugal and smart with our money.
Do we still need this all?
Yeah, well, because we have to vote on it.
We could table everything else that wasn't voted on today.
We could certainly do those.
Take a second. Okay, let me do this right now, then, don't we have time? So number, number four, uh, four, number one. I just wanted to be sure when I talked about certificated resignations, that there, it wasn't mentioned that shouldn't we be giving Ann Green a, a resolution commending her for her years of service? Thank you. I, I, no, I know, I mean, I didn't make, you know what I meant by saying that. So, okay, I'll make a motion that we approve uh, the resignations as submitted, and that Ann Green receive a letter of, of accommodation for her years of service.
If I could comment, I think if you're basing that on ten years, and I would also think that Jennifer Zippen would receive one also.
Okay. Then we'll do that as well.
Or do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, and the next one we can do very quickly is number five, two, the employment for classified employees. What I wanted to make sure is, you listed computer technician, okay, then you said Michael Rojas. What job does he have, and what job does Alan Wu have?
They're both computer technicians, one is full-time and one is part-time.
Okay, just want to make sure, because I didn't say.
Oh, it didn't repeat it.
In, in the future, I appreciate it, so I don't have to ask. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the employment for classified employees, and that we note that Michael and Alan are also computer technicians.
Second.
All those in favor?
Sorry, I couldn't-
I'll make a motion that we table the board policies discussion to the next agenda.
Second.
You're not going to be here all night.
I heard a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any comments from any board members?
No.
No, that speaker's cards, we will adjourn at ten o'clock, uh, nine fifty-nine.